Welcome to the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, March twenty first. Welcome to spring. It's seven oh one, so I am gonna call this meeting to order. I would like to first invite the public to add any comments. Is there any public who would like to comment at this time? Please use the raise hand function if you would like to make a public comment. We have no public in the room, just in case anybody's wondering. No, Dave's good, Maria, S J. Okay, seeing no public comment, we will move on to. That was public comment, which is agenda item number three. We'll move on to agenda item number four, approving the minutes from February twenty first. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please? Sabina, does anyone have any comments on the minutes or corrections that are needed?
Did you all see that I put them in the meeting materials folder?
Yes.
I love that. Thank you for making it so easy to find.
Yes, sorry that I didn't start doing that sooner.
That's okay.
Continues quality improvement.
How many months have you been doing the job? Where are we at?
Still almost three.
Almost three, not quite. Yeah, I think we're. Yeah, I think we're still making solid forward progress. We're pretty happy. As there are no changes, can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Or a second?
Second. All second.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a second. All those in favor say aye. And Wendy?
I am going to abstain because I was not there.
Okay, noted. Okay, so the minutes from February twenty first are approved. That takes us to our next item discussion, and we have several topics. So we're already ahead of schedule. This is great.
Yeah.
First, a town meeting debrief from the planning commission table.
Yes, so I was not at the table. It was Wendy and Susan and then. Sabina, I don't know how much of the planning commission, okay, she was at the conservation commission table, so. Seeing as Susan is not here, I do have an update that I can give. But I'll let Wendy, I'll invite Wendy to go first.
Okay, I can share some observations. I probably had about a half dozen conversations. Most of them focused on the bike path. Study and the two alternatives, probably because that was the most visual in our display. I. I tried to initiate some conversations about the town plan, but inevitably they sort of. Focused in on that study, curiosities about, you know, where those proposed routes were. Concerns about being close to Route fifteen and on private property and being because of the. Some of the property boundaries and the proximity to fifteen, like concerns that it would be like being people's. Practically, you know, running by their windows. So there was, there was interest, there was general, there was a strong support. For trails and an alternative bike and ped. Transportation, but just not sure if those two alternatives are the best ones.
Wendy, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
I don't know if you know the answer to that. When we hear people talking about strong support for trails. Do you have a sense of what they envision those trails to be like? You know, footpaths through the wood wilderness or something that's five, six feet wide and paved that you would ride a bike on?
Yeah, I think in this context, it was about bike, bike and multi-use trails with bike. That could be used for alternative transportation. So it wasn't about, you know, in this context, looking at these maps, it wasn't about. I want to be able to explore the woods. It was about, I want to get from A to B safely. And not in my car.
Thank you.
So can I just? I want to show you guys what's on the website right now for the path and. How you can direct people to that if they have questions and obviously it's. It is. Being updated all the time, so it will change. Alright, so this is our, our regular planning commission page on Join in Jericho and. Is it just lagging? Okay, so. There is a direct link in the lower of those four icons, the lower right takes you to the. The multimodal path study. And so you can get there through the PC page or. I titled it connecting Jericho Corners and Riverside. So if you put in any of those words, you should be able to get there through the search engine as well. But then, once you get to. The direct page, it has a. Kind of a background Q and A that Susan put together. A little timeline that Linda helped me put together, a link to the regional planning. Regional planning. Commission. And what it also has for anyone who's interested are the old reports. So this top one here is the Bike Ped Master Plan, which was done in 2015. And this one down here. Is the previous study done by DuBois and King for this particular project. So it's, it's there if. If you want to send people to read.
I commend you for all the work that went into doing that and how fabulous this is. To make it easy for us and community members to see. Like see the, the. The layers of planning and the integration of the work that we've been trying to do. So thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
Yep, and I appreciate that you leaked things from the past because that's a conversation that we have a lot often. Didn't we do a study on this? Why aren't we starting there? And here we actually did that correctly and it's shown.
And it's in the Q and A specifically.
Fabulous.
Why repeat the study? Why aren't we just building? So, oh, and then also important is, is the slideshow.
Right, right.
From the meeting, yeah, from this last.
And I thought the meeting was really great. Also, I thought how they presented it and what they were able to answer and, and what they, how they. Raised the answers about things they were not able to answer was also really helpful and productive because it invited people to continue following the process. It didn't shut anyone down. It didn't say, we're, that's outside the scope, which so often we hear, right? They were like, yes, that's important.
They were listening to us.
Yeah.
And then you can't really see it, but there's also the video of that meeting is also on here. So it's all there. And again, it will be. Changing with time, but it's a good starting place.
And since we're on that, I also want to say to Linda specifically, I know. You had to do the heavy lift around. Printing and mailing all the letters to all the property owners that could possibly be impacted on those very roughly drawn connecting lines. So I was talking to a buyer who wants to buy a house in Jericho. And they were like, yeah, and then I listened in on one of your town. Planning commission meetings, and he didn't know I was on the planning commission. He was like. And it was about this connector trail and there was like seventy people. Do you always have that many people? And I was like, no, we don't. However, we're learning better ways to make sure the public is engaged and informed and can participate around topics that directly impact them. And that was a really wonderful example of that intention. So, nice job.
Thank you. I also have been getting a bunch of emails even after the fact, which is great. And I'm just sort of. Collecting them and sending them to the engineers as well, so.
Great, so that's working too. People feel like they can engage in other ways outside of the two hour meeting.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Which is great.
Um, did Susan have prepared statements about the PC table that you were gonna share?
No, but I had something prepared.
Great.
So in addition to our planning commission table, we also had a table next to our planning commission table where we hosted. John Ashley from DuBois and King, who is the engineer for our wastewater feasibility study. So I reached out to him the other day to ask for his feedback on the conversations that he had on the table so that I could update all of you. On, you know, his interaction there with folks. And so he gave me a great update. He said. He had a lot of productive and engaging conversations. He said some were in the potential service areas and some were not. There generally seemed to be widespread support for community wastewater. And he said that that was consistent with the survey results that he's been seeing that people have been mailing back to them, asking questions about their septic systems. And then he just generally was explaining the process of the study to people and that process is that they're currently working on the needs assessment portion, which is considered the thirty percent report. So the thirty percent of the work complete, we'll get this needs assessment, which will. Look at the different, the needs and the capacity in the three villages for wastewater. And then they'll do a presentation. On the options to meet those needs when we get to what's called the sixty percent report, which is where sixty percent of the work is done. And then when we get to the ninety percent, which is really the end, so maybe should be hundred percent. They call it ninety percent for whatever reason. Will be getting comparisons of costs and other factors for the various options that they will present to us, so. And then he did say that since town meeting, he got a few more of the surveys that have come in. By folks completing them, and he said he was there until about one o'clock or so. So he was there for a good portion of the meeting, but I thought that was encouraging feedback that there was generally support for wastewater infrastructure in the town. Continuing to investigate the feasibility of it. So I just wanted to share that update with all of you.
Susan, at the risk of, sorry, Linda.
It's been a day.
It's been a day. It's been a day for all of us. At the risk of repeating and duplicative, we talk about the three village centers. How tightly bound are those geographically? In other words, what are the? If I live off of Packard Road, am I counted in that? Or do I have to live off of Starboard or off of Griswold to be counted in that?
It's a good question. So the areas are delineated in the feasibility study and of what, what DuBois and King is going to look at, and I don't. Know the answer off the top of my head, what the delineation was, if it was the. Like the zoning district, village center boundary, or if it was something different than that, but I can get you that answer.
Is that on the webpage?
We have not built the wastewater feasibility webpage yet.
And do we have, do we have the study on the webpage? There are the meets and bounds for it.
No, but that's what Sabina and I will be working on in the very near future is building a webpage, just like the Bike Path one. For the wastewater feasibility project.
It'd be nice for people in town to know, are we in this feasibility study area?
Yeah, and John Ashley did have those maps at town meeting at his table. I just can't remember off the top of my head what the boundaries are. But they generally do follow like the village designation boundaries of the three villages.
So I was speaking to him there and he explained to me. The process of getting something built, which I've. Forgotten most of what he said, so I'm asking you.
Yeah.
But my question is, because you. You have to have this study done in order to qualify for some of the financing, but is it for all of the financing? And so my. Question is, is there a part of this process that the town could start now? In conjunction with this in order to streamline this at all in the long run?
I'm not sure what we could do now, not knowing what. The needs are gonna be. So that's really the phase we're in now is like they're doing a needs assessment. Not saying we couldn't do anything, but if we did something, we wouldn't know whether or not it would be compatible with what the results.
Well, but it had to do with the, I think, required process for getting. Either state or federal funding or both. And there were steps that you had to do. And I, he sort of laid those out and I just don't remember what they were exactly, but. I just wanted to know, can we be doing any of that now? Because I, you know, I, again, I would say. Why aren't we building something for Riverside right now?
Right.
And so. Is there, I just want to make sure we do everything we can to push this forward quickly because really, all of our town plan updates. Are relatively meaningless without infrastructure. They just are. All the housing initiatives are meaningless without the infrastructure. So can we just do everything we can to push this ahead? Is my question.
Yes, we can.
And I don't remember what he said.
It is a fairly linear process though, so it sounds like maybe you might be asking about, there could be some parallel tasks.
I am.
And I, and I, my understanding is that. You can't. It's like, it's like you need to get this feasibility study done, which will tell you what the options are. And give you some costs and then you need to select one of those to move into preliminary engineering, which is what they call step two is the preliminary engineering phase. And then there's. Step three, which as I understand it is where it's actually like design and build. That said, I'm doing everything that I can in my power to make sure that. It doesn't get stalled anywhere and that I, like I was emailing with John today, like. Hey, now that we did the table at town meeting and the survey deadline is way past, can we just say it's closed and to start doing like the report? Can you just get me the report?
And I'm sure that regardless of, I mean, I'm. Very, very sure that in Riverside and probably all three town centers, the need will exceed the capacity.
Well, I wonder, Linda, if there's also the parallel track. Is knowing we are gonna need funding one way or another, like whatever the results are. We're gonna need to be able to access state and federal funds in order to move forward. And so just making sure that we're as knowledgeable as possible. About what those sources of funds are, what their timetables are, what documents we're gonna need in addition to the feasibility study. In order to get our application in that way. It seems like that's the parallel track. We could be on right now.
Yes, there are some funding sources that I'm aware of. However, there is general discomfort on the funder side to fund something that is not yet designed.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting that we would, we would, we would put anything into place. I think it's just making sure that. As long as you know what they are, is there anything that we can do collectively to either. Educate the select board, educate the public, pull together background documents that are not, you know, because usually with most. State and federal proposals, there's a whole bunch of documentation that's not. It's in conjunction with the technical side. There's all the other financial and whatever pieces you have to put in.
Yeah.
That's what I'm wondering about.
Yeah, setting up an operating agency or department in the, in the town for managing it. So when it comes into place, that's not a delay. Things that. Right, you know, can we accelerate the bureaucratic tape? Can we even just cut through some of the tape now?
Exactly. So it's not questioning what you know or what you're moving forward. It's just knowing. There's, there's a technical process and then there's a funding process and they each have their own. You must follow these in order to go there without a doubt, but there, but there are some things sometimes you can do on the funding side. While you're waiting for the technical information to come in.
Yeah, and I think some of those will depend on where the funding comes from because there's more than one place to get funding. And so. I don't know that I can fully answer your question. It is something good to be mindful of.
Yeah.
And the other thing that I know is that there are some other neighboring communities such as Westford and Huntington that are in the same process that we are, but they are ahead of us.
Oh.
How, what was the result of their wastewater vote?
No, but I wish I did because I know there's a lot of front porch forum chatter about.
Right, yeah, my mom wanted to sign at the end of her driveway that said, get your shit together, vote yes.
Oh, I like.
Let like, get it.
Westford, yeah.
Get it, kind of wastewater or something.
So it does seem like, Sabina wants to talk.
I don't actually, I acknowledge that S J had her hand up, so.
One sec, do you mind if I say one more thing and then we'll come to you, S J? Is that okay?
Yeah.
But that's exactly the kind of thing that we could be doing now. So while there's the feasibility study, we could be messaging like, we know. Like Chris, you said, like all these other things we want to get accomplished are not going to be possible without. The wastewater infrastructure, so building the community understanding and community support. So if and when we have to go to the community for. A bond or for matching funds or for whatever authorities. All that's in place. Yeah, I really feel like it would behoove us to, to make sure that we're doing that at the same time.
Certainly around. The other part of, which is, yes, we need an organization in town for it, but we also, as you were saying. We need to get the citizens of Jericho ready to say, we're willing to bond for this.
Right.
Because maybe there's gonna be a comparison, personally, we have to.
You know, that's, that's a good point. I do feel like we can start that conversation. We can normalize that conversation.
Yes.
This is the result of the survey is, is by and large, everyone is for it, thumbs up. Even though we understand it's gonna cost money. And we are gonna use every resource we have to try to get public, private partnership and grants and things. However, it will more than likely result in a bond. So let's, which is not a bad thing because it's an investment in your future so that if you. Are impacted by a failed system in the future, you can tap into the shared system. Or you can, or you can, right, if it's built big enough, or you can build a granny flat in your backyard or whatever, and ADU.
Yeah.
Yes, I could normalize that expectation.
Public knowledge of the project, because I do.
Yes.
My sense is that from the few things that I heard about what people are saying, were saying on the Westford front porch forum was that. Maybe they just were not aware that that study was happening and so they were surprised or maybe. Not supportive at the end when they got to the vote. And so like. Worst case scenario in my mind for Jericho is that we get there, we get to the vote and people are like, wait, what? This was.
Exactly. Yeah, the more time we have to normalize the conversation, the better. So maybe I'll get my own sign. That says Jericho, get your.
Let's get to that stage in the development. Let's just start with saying, hey, Jericho, where's your blank going? Right.
And where will it go in ten or fifteen years?
Yeah, still throwing us.
Exactly, no throwing. S J, do you still want to, do you have a comment still?
I, I think you addressed it. I just, I was really excited to see the wastewater guy there and then town meeting lasted like. For a year or two, and so by the time we came out of town meeting, he was gone. And so I was just wondering if he seemed to have a lot of kind of. Informational materials. Did he leave any of those behind? And it sounds like maybe if you're gonna put a spot on the website together, then a lot of that information will end up there. So that's all.
Uh, yeah, he didn't physically leave anything behind, like paperwork or handouts or anything, but yes, the intent is that all of the papers, the maps and things that he had at town meeting that he was sharing. Will be on the website.
Okay, anything else for town meeting before we move to the next topic in our discussion?
Well, the food hub thing initiative passed and Wendy and I have offered. To be the PC liaisons to that group or as a co-host kind of thing, because we already sort of have our feet halfway in the, in the ag. Subcommittee anyway, so it seemed like a logical. Connection, so they are, they're chomping at the bit and I think it's just to be formalized and then they'll get rolling.
That's exciting. Okay, um, let's move on to the housing work session debrief.
Yeah, so for that item, I just kind of wanted to offer the planning commission members an opportunity to share any thoughts or takeaways or. I don't know, any kind, were there any surprises? I know you guys have all been, I was talking to Sarah, I've all been entrenched in these conversations for quite a while, so I just wanted to just also give an opportunity for. For the planning commission members to speak because we had so many people at the table last week when David was presenting. We had such great participation and conversations, but I wanted to just. Provide this opportunity for you guys to. Share any thoughts, takeaways.
Well, I had one thing I wanted to follow up on. Chuck Lacy had raised. A frustration with. The last thirty to fifty years of the town plan focusing development on the towns, the village centers. And I had briefly addressed it. That last week, but I think. His frustration is that that, you know, we've been saying that forever and nothing has happened. And so. His idea is to. Forget about that focus and to let sort of open the whole town up. And I just want to come back to that and say. I think that just because we haven't. Nothing has come of the past thirty, fifty years of that focus doesn't mean that that focus is incorrect. I still firmly believe in that focus, but I think that the only way. That we will move forward is if the town really commits to the infrastructure work. And if the town commits to the infrastructure work, then we can concentrate the development in the village centers and it will work. And it will get done and things will be built. So I just. I think it's, I understand his frustration, but I think. It's, I don't think in my opinion that that's a fault with the concept. I think it's a fault with a lot of other issues. So I think the town really needs to commit to the infrastructure work. And if so, then I still support that concept because. I think in the end, it's the best use of our land. So I just want, I wanted to follow up on that and sort of clarify. That his, his, my response to his feelings.
Thank you, Chris. And I was gonna add to that, that. I walked away from it with like, so our strategy is two-pronged. One is the money for infrastructure and the other is zoning. Where we all seem to agree, which is this golden triangle, like changing the zoning to make it easier. Where we either could either allow or in, so it's either allowing or actively requiring. More dense housing, like those seem to be two different things. And I realize. I would love someone to point me in the direction of how I learn about zoning. And what our role as planning commission is vis a vis supporting. The zoning group, right? And how we can or cannot direct them, because I hear us talk a lot about the.
Well, we can, we can rewrite those.
We, we don't, so it is ours. Okay.
It is ours.
Thank you.
Then the select board has to approve whatever changes we make or suggest.
Okay.
The zoning administrator makes sure that he's done.
Yes.
Okay. But they don't, that was the question. So they, they are following the dictates of what we.
They've come back to us multiple times and said, hey, we can't make a black and white decision because this isn't clear. Can you please adjust this section?
Thank you.
Right, so it is, it's us.
It's, so we could choose to be proactive.
And we have done.
Yeah, oh, I know we've done a lot.
We have made arguably not enough changes, but we've made some pretty broad changes. To allow, you know, triplexes and things in other areas where they weren't allowed. Not as widely as Chuck Lacy would ask that.
Oh, I understand.
Be allowed in every zone, but I agree with Chris on that. I don't think that. Allowing everything everywhere all at once is the answer.
Yep. Okay.
But I agree that you're not incentivizing or even making it feasible to build more densely in the village centers without the infrastructure. So it's, it's a point. We can change the zoning all day. But that won't allow for people to. With any.
Under, so.
Without being a charity, they, they will be able to afford to.
Is there anything that, given like the changes that the, that have already been made? That if the infrastructure were to be built, that is any residual zoning change that we might want to consider?
Yeah, I think we've been talking for a while about the character-based zoning in Riverside specifically.
Okay.
And again, we've made some updates there, but Wisdom House, they brought forward in their presentation about Riverside. Several character-based zoning changes that they would recommend that would allow other more dense.
And I would, I would recommend. That we. Sort of dramatically increase the density of the village centers and. The low-density residential district, which is essentially the triangle.
Yeah.
And I would say. I'd be foregoing just quarter acre.
Same.
Across the, all of those districts.
I would actually allow eighth of an acre in the village centers. Or tenth of an acre in the village centers.
And that would be a dramatic, dramatic change, only if we had the infrastructure.
Okay, so could I make a motion? Is there such a thing? I'm totally out of order here, so you can just tell me if I'm wrong. And again, just. Hearing that there's interest, that it's a strategy.
Yes.
There's interest in it. It may not be the primary winner without the infrastructure, but hand in glove, it works. What would we need to do as a planning commission to say, okay, let's change that zoning?
We need to write the town plan. Right, first, so that it supports, so the language in the town plan gives us the direction to say, hey, we said this in the town plan. The way that we make action on those, those things is now to change the zoning. Is now to change the zoning.
I bet I, if you read the current town plan, there's nothing that precludes us from doing it now.
We, we are enabled by the town plan to change the zoning. We could.
Right.
Right here. I think it's already very some quarter acre, eight acre here.
Quarter acre is the most dense we get.
Yeah, but we could certainly adjust that if we, if we wanted. We have to warn the public.
Well, I'm support, I have no idea if my hands up or not. I ca- I can't get my news zoom icon. I, I had. You know, I, while I am su- supportive of. Um, changing zoning to be more um. Um, conducive towards denser development. I'm just wondering, like, how much bandwidth do we have as a planning commission? To, to, to do parallel. Parallel big projects like this, cuz I know like. When we, when we were looking at the, the P D, P U D updates and even to a lesser extent A D U, but mostly the P U D. And that took a lot of bandwidth and energy from.
Yeah. I agree with you. I think that there's multiple ways to accomplish it, and I'm not sure that us doing the work is the best. Way to accomplish it because we are not. Uh, certified planners.
Yeah, I can speak.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I, if we decided to go to quarter acre zoning, it would trigger a lot of other things like character-based zoning that. Um, cuz it's a whole different. Discussion around setbacks and everything else when you go to, to, from quarter acre to smaller, right?
Yeah, and, oh yeah, that's fine.
It's, it's not just the flip of a switch saying I'm going from this to that. There's a lot more involved um. So yes, it is a deeper process, but I'm not sure that the heavy lift. Can or should be done by these humans.
Well, at the end of the day, it will be done.
We are the ones who do it.
No, not if you, I don't, I'm not, I'm, what do you think?
Well, so Susan and I have been talking about timing for doing zoning updates and things like that, and so what currently our. Strategy is, cuz we have a document that we work on, that's like agendas going out for weeks and months and. Almost to the end of the year.
You have intention.
So right now, you know, we have a lot of work with the town plan going on and our, our agendas are pretty, pretty much booked until like. Early summer. Um, however, we do currently have David White. Who is consulting, who's helping us with the town plan, but he also has a task in his contract with the town to do some zoning. Updates, and so Susan and I have already spoke to David and, and asked for him to look at the. Character-based zone. To give us some recommendations and feedback, so he's been working on that, but he has sort of been doing it as like a when I have time sort of thing. Cuz his focus has also been on the town plan. So that was sort of like our, our, what Susan and I talked about as being like. The first round of zoning updates, kind of getting the low hanging fruit and addressing some of the. Things that have been brought to our attention about the character-based zone, and so that could be something that gets on the agenda, maybe in. The fall or maybe the, by the end of this calendar year, and then um. The sec- we knew there would be, you know, probably some more significant things that would come out of. The town plan once it was adopted, is adopted by the select board, which is. In January of next year, and then we were thinking that a larger zoning update, which might include what you're talking about here, like changing. Um, whole zones or uh, you know, doing something more significant would be next year.
And that works, I, you know, I, I really was just asking about authorities and process and, and. Again, what can we? I appreciate the not biting off more than we can chew in doing something well, and particularly if it means engaging. With. Lots of people who will have lots of differing understandings and perspectives and information and all that, so. To, I'm, I'm fine with that, just knowing where it plugs in and how we take the ideas. That are here and see them out to fruition. So thank you.
I had another comment about um conversations from last week's meeting. I was really curious, and I know very little about it, about uh the designation of a hamlet. And um as, as, as one strategy. For growth in that. Alleged golden triangle. And I don't know, Linda, if, if you're, if you can share any information about what that actually means, how complicated is that? Um, tonight, or is that something that we could talk about in the, uh, at a future meeting?
I couldn't speak to it tonight. I'd need to do some research, but I can definitely.
David sent me something cuz I asked about that too.
Okay.
Um, because. In my crazy muddled mind, I was almost thinking like the Jericho Center. To me seems more like a hamlet. And then you could shift the triangle a little bit if you took that out of the picture, but that's just me talking like. Gobbledygook babble, but um. In the interest of time, I probably won't dig through my emails, um, but I could send you what he sent me, which is basically, I think, just, you know, like a, a stock. Definition.
Yeah, can you send it to everybody?
The Google page.
Oh, perfect.
And then I'm sure there's more. I mean, it was not like, you know, it was literally a paragraph. But it was a good starting point for me at least.
If I recall correctly, his hamlet was gonna be around M M U.
Right, but.
And there is an eight-unit subdivision going on right at the bottom of Morgan Road already. Which I think those are three acre lots, and that three acres owning there. And the border's up on the fort, so you don't have a lot of space there.
I don't know that a hamlet though is a. It's not this, it's not something like a, this, similar to like a village designation or a growth area. There's not any. You know, legal definition or benefit that I'm aware of, but I'm gonna do some more research into that cuz uh. I'm curious to know now.
Um, so one thing that Linda and I talked about when we were, um, when she asked me about putting this topic, the housing work session debrief on the agenda. Um, I had said. My perception of that meeting was that it went really well, that there was general widespread agreement that. Housing um is a problem that we should address, and especially Heidi's comment at the time. It's not a this or that, it's a this and that and, 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 well, we need to be doing anything and everything. Um, so that was my perception of that meeting. Um broadly, does anyone have any different?
One of the things that just keeps occurring to me. Around a lot of this is. Demographics. I hate to come back to this over and over again, but we are one of the. Ten oldest towns in the state. We're the second oldest state in the country. Vermont has been losing population in every county except Chittenden County for the last twenty years. What's gonna happen when? And there's enough of us in this room or within spitting distance of thinking about retirement. What happens when we all leave? Do we end up with a housing glut? If we're, and I'm worried that we will. Without intention and being careful, we end up with an awful lot of empty houses. Rather than a vibrant, growing community that we said we want.
Goodness, Eric, I never thought of that.
Very deep question.
No, we're, we're all getting older.
No, you're right, but it never occurred to me to think of it in that context of the.
I mean, mathematically speaking, I think that'll be defined by birth rates in the next five years.
Yeah, I think it's been defined by the birth rates in the ones twenty. We're, we're just barely below replacement level right now in the country.
What about the great um climate migration?
I think Royal County was, was rated as one of the, you know, most likely places to experience population growth from um. Folks who want a different climate to live in.
Yes.
And they're building housing.
Yeah, I have no shortage of people who wanna live here. Could sell. Lots of homes to young people.
Yep.
I think it might also depend on what gets built here in the next ten years, because the. The data that we're seeing is that there are smaller and smaller households, and there are people that. You know, a lot more single-person households or two-person households, and so. What I think is, could be possible was we end up with a lot of large houses that may not. If we do get the smaller housing, yeah, so it, that's an interesting question though that you.
The, the other thing that I wrote down from it um. Was I personally was left with the, the question of what has Morrisville done to promote additional housing growth? Cuz David sort of said they're doing something right. Have we heard about that as a group and I just missed it and I apologize?
In a way similar to St. Albans was organized around revitalization.
They're also building large. They're large buildings.
Yes, there's.
I, I think it would not be out of place in Riverside.
So don't have a um.
They have water and sewer.
They have, they have municipal services and infrastructure, yes, but I don't believe there is. A large and vocal contingent saying no flat top multi-unit housing like Essex and Williston. Which we do have here.
Okay.
And that's a um. Always sort of a. Roadblock we run into.
But also Morrisville's growth. May sound like a lot. But Morrisville still has fewer people now than it had in the seventies. They had a lot of outgrowth there over the last thirty or forty years, since they've got. A long climb before they get back to where they were before.
Okay, yep, yes. Outgrowth, I don't even, I don't know if I've used that word before, but that is a accurate description. For Morrisville, they used to have a booming. Booming population in the seventies and eighties.
Thank you.
One of my uh other takeaways was that the lack of rental units in Jericho and how that. Contributes to the skewedness in our um. Options, um, and just, I mean, just comparatively, you know, learning Richmond had twice as many. Rental units, Essex had three times as many as we had um. And thinking about how we can encourage. Affordable, reasonable rent. Units, more building of rental units in Jericho as, as part of the conversation, cuz sometimes I hear. I hear things. Like when, when we're referring to like the owner occupied A D Us, for example, about like. Oh, they live here, they have skin in the game. And it, it has this sort of assumption that because one rents, one doesn't have skin in the game. And so I, I really wanna make sure that we are keeping the opportunity for rental units in, in our conversations about. Housing options, not just the size of housing, but um, um rentals ver- and owners. Owner occupied buildings.
It is worth noting that Richmond with their town center has multi-story apartment buildings. We don't have a town center like that. The way Jericho developed, that never came about, so we don't have that. Infrastructure that would support. Absolutely, everything, everything in Riverside.
Commercial district, remember those, those settings that um. We saw, I mean, they, that, that could work, and, and that's the other thing I, I, I also wanna kind of bring up is that. We, we do have that wonderful study from the commercial district, what that was about multi-use. Development, and we put a lot of work into that, and it would be nice to get that back in the conversation.
Got voted down.
Yeah. Yep, it did, but it was still a lot of work and it still had some valuable ideas in there.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Wendy. We should um keep that work top of mind and how. How we can cite it in future conversations about being a yes and option. Okay, anything else on housing before we move on to the housing question of the month responses? No, oh, I do have one more. S J, great job running that meeting. Thank you for that.
Oh, my God, masterful.
Agreed.
Very appreciated by this team. Um, okay, housing question of the month responses coming to you live in a new format, which I'm excited to see.
Yeah. I know David had this in his presentation, but I think we just didn't get to it, so I wanted to make sure that we talked about it here. Um, and Sabina's gonna share.
Which one do you want me to start with?
Start with the um. Housing survey response distribution. Alright, so this is just a graph, a pie graph kind of showing um of the one hundred and five responses that we got. To the housing question of the month. This is the distribution of geographically where the folks live.
Can you guys see it? Yeah, or maybe she'll just.
The little, the little rectangle at the top.
On the left, yeah.
Some of the fonts are kind of light, so I apologize. I tried to.
No, it's okay.
So I just wanted to share this to show that, you know, we had. You know, rel- a good response relative to what we've been getting the last. Few questions of the month. The first question of the month, we had a hundred and thirty-seven responses, and the second one, we had eighty-eight, so we got one oh five. On this one, which is, is right in, right in the mix there of average, I guess, um. And to show that we did get responses from people that live in a lot of different parts of town. We did get at least one person from every. Um, region, and do you guys, you're familiar with that map of the regions that I think um. Catherine developed, and that's what these are referring to. Okay. So we did get, you know, some responses from people throughout town. Most of the responses came from Jericho Corners. Um, twenty percent, the rural west was second with fourteen percent, that's like Spunk Hollow and Plains Road. And then the rural southeast and the. Can't really see what the bottom one is. So those were the, the four big ones. Um, and we did ask a question that said. What would you support in the area where you live? But I didn't make any graphs for that because we didn't really get a good amount of responses from every single area that I, I didn't think we'd get any meaningful. Data, so I just, I didn't. Analyze that data, but just wanted to show you the distribution of where we got responses from. Alright, so we will go through the responses in each of the village areas though, uh, so. Why don't we start with? Jericho's center, okay, hang on.
Yeah, they just said part of it is hard to read. Is it hard to read on the, on the presentation? Yes, it is.
Yes.
Sure, if you have the. Actual website.
I was gonna say, if you have the actual slides on the website.
Which, yeah, and they're there. It's on. If you're in the audience and I, I agree, I don't, well, maybe what I can do with this.
Sounds as good as we can get.
Well. I don't know how much time we wanna take with this. I could try to pull up my pictures.
Can you zoom it to more than one hundred percent?
I can try.
There we go, yeah, keep going.
Alright, there we go.
So if, if you remember, the question that we asked was um which of these housing types? Would you support in these village areas? And the options were definitely support, somewhat support, neither support nor oppose, somewhat oppose, or definitely oppose. And so this is how the data came out for that question with regards to Jericho Center. And so you can see there was, you know, not surprisingly, the strongest amount of support for a single family homes, but. Support for small units, uh, one to two bedroom, eight, eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet. Um, followed by good support for tiny houses, which we defined as being less than eight hundred square feet. And then also I thought pretty good support for a three to four unit home. Um, which are all permitted in the village centers um. And then. The, the support definitely starts to dwindle when you get to the five to nine unit home and, and higher unit, number of units. Alright, so.
Of who was flowing out the surveys at all? Did that come across at all?
When you say who, what do you mean?
I mean, who?
Yeah, I think we do get some if they're logged in, but we don't.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just wondering if. As a whole. The number's enough to be a representative sample of the town. The question is, is it a skewed sample in that the only people who responded were people who. Have very strong opinions against large unit housing.
Yeah, that's a good thing to think about. I'm not sure that we know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanna know what ten percent of people are against a small house. What, why is that?
Definitely opposed to.
Why would you be definitely opposed to another house? Why would you be definitely opposed to another house? And I, that's a mysterious answer to me.
Well, I wanna know, how come we have more than a hundred percent?
No, that's.
That's the number of. Oh, okay, that's okay.
Overachievers.
Yes, overachievers.
All right, next, uh, let's do Jericho Corners.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
You know, on that one. So that's where we are. So this is where we are here in Jericho Corners, an area around the elementary school. Um, and so similarly, there was strong support for a single family, small homes. Um, also support for a tiny house and actually more support for a three to four unit home than a tiny home. If you lump the definitely support and the somewhat support um together. And then there is a little bit more support for a five to nine unit home than there was in Jericho Center. Uh, but there is dwindling support in those larger unit home options similar to Jericho Center. And then we'll look at Riverside.
Our growth area. We're saying we want those larger units.
Right. Any surprises so far?
No, badly.
I'm, I'm a little surprised that this area was more opposed to the large units than Jericho Center, because we have more space here for.
Hmm, mm-hmm. I think people's perception of space is very uh subjective.
Yes.
When you drive down this street, you know, the two little houses that are down there, that are tucked into the bank and then go downhill, those weren't there. There was ye olde tub shop for a hundred years, literally a hundred years. And then they took that down. And they took that down and they squeezed two little houses there. And if you ask people if those houses would have fit, no way, you can't put two houses there. And they'd have to share that driveway to turn around. That's just not gonna work. And then now they're there and people are like, hasn't, haven't those always been there? No. Like five years they've been there, not even four years.
Yep.
So yes, it's um very interesting to me. And then in, in Jericho Center, the one right next to the store, that little house wasn't there until like ten years ago.
Yep.
It's just a little parking area. Nobody would have thought you could squeeze a little house in there. Oh, my gosh. It's like it's always been there.
Maybe blend in as with these, which they blend in with the environment.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's well done. But again, it's subjective. People think, no, there is no room.
Yeah.
So that would be interesting if we, if we ever did like a
Before and after.
Well, yeah, or just to show what gentle infill actually can look like, because it's already happening.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, you got all the duplexes, triplexes, along with fifteen right there, but they weren't here twenty years ago, ten years ago.
Well, and on a similar note, I would like to point out again that a lot of the historic towns around us, Richmond, for example, Bristol, have large buildings in town with flat roofs.
It's a row.
I just wanna say, the flat roof thing is crazy to me that that's such a thing, because a lot of historic Vermont has
David.
a hundred year old buildings with flat roofs.
A lot of downtown.
That are beautiful.
Saw more that hides the flat roof.
Well, they're done well, but I'm just pointing, you don't have to have.
Yeah, yeah.
To, to just wholesale say yes to some, or say no to something, because somebody else did it in a way that you don't like.
Anyway.
So does character-based and form-based code get us out of that conundrum?
No, and that's what, one of the things that needs to be changed about the Riverside character base uh, code is that it, it doesn't allow for the flat roof, which is crazy.
Thank you. That's what that, because I figured there's a piece of something here that I am not, I am not connecting. So thank you for making that.
I feel like his slide showing what most downtowns historically look like was teasing that, saying like, hey, get used to it. Because this is actually, do you think, doesn't this look great? Oh, my God, that's what everybody does? We could look like that. Oh, but we can't, because the zoning doesn't let us. But hey, we could.
So definitely, it looks like we have.
In Riverside, we've got the same sort of top three lines are looking quite similar to the previous two villages. But the five to nine unit home gets more support here than in either of the other two villages. And we even get a little bit more creeping support for the ten to fifteen unit and fifteen unit and up homes, although not a significant amount. But there, it is more than we had for, more support than there was in Jericho Center and Jericho Corners. I thought that was worth noting.
Again, that, that gets back to the sample size and in this room, we would also, yeah, fifteen plus units, that's perfectly appropriate there.
Mm-hmm.
So what is the population of Jericho that we need to be reaching out to to have them say, actually Riverside is the right place for them?
Mm-hmm.
Because getting back to housing and affordable housing, we can't get to our targets.
Well.
Unless we start building things like that, because the cost of building something smaller per unit basis is gonna kill it.
And this is a great, when we're ready, a segue to the Wisdom House update conversation, because their proposal is for what, a fifty unit complex?
I thought it was multiple buildings.
Yeah, it's a complex. It's multiple buildings, but some units could have twenty, or some, some building could have twenty units conceivably, one of the buildings, but.
Yeah, I think, well, I guess I'm, I'm unclear because there's not actually a plan that has been presented that I've seen. It's more of a conceptual.
Yeah, it's a conceptual.
Um, but I do think there was a large build, one large building and then also smaller cottage units.
Yeah, it was like graduated different options.
Yeah, some variety. So these were the results of the question. I thought it was interesting that, um, you know, there wasn't as much variety. I thought there would be more support in Riverside for larger units, which we didn't. We saw, you know, only to a very small scale. Um, the interesting thing, one of the interesting things for me is that all three of these villages are currently zoned the same and all of these housing types are permitted, permissible. None of them are conditional uses. They're all
Yep.
permissible.
Were there any comments included on the responses about these?
There was an opportunity to comment in general about other housing types. And I think in those comments, we got a lot of um, ADUs, you know, which again are already permissible.
It was ADUs. Some people said senior housing. Some people said um duplexes. Um, so when I, when I put this on the website, I put a clarifying statement that we did, that we purposely left off ADUs, duplexes, and larger single-family home, because we have those in abundance. And this is about what we don't have. So it's on the website for people who look at these graphs after the fact, but um beyond those types of suggestions, there really wasn't anything. I don't know, really anything.
Anything eye-opening that I saw in the comments or anything.
Right, right.
Other than.
Fewer, fewer comments in this case.
So just, yeah, I thought that was, it was good to get a gauge on, you know, it does seem like people are relatively comfortable with a triplex and a fourplex from this very small sample size, even though we don't have a lot of those, which is just good, good information. Um, and then other than Riverside, you know, in Jericho Corners and Jericho Center, there starts to the support starts to wane for larger than a fourplex. But they are all permissible, so it could be done anywhere. Um, so just things to think about, um. Question for all of you to, to ponder that you don't necessarily have to answer right now. What can we do to better set conditions for these types of houses in the village areas?
Give us the structures.
Was that like a slot, like a
Very subtle.
I feel like we passed.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, next topic, Wisdom House update. So.
You wanna go first?
No, you go first.
I go first, okay. Um, so Chris and I did meet a couple of weeks ago with Michael Oman and Bill Butler, generally just to kind of reestablish a relationship. Um, I hadn't met them personally before, so it was a good opportunity for me to get to know them and just talk a little more about the concept and the idea of Wisdom House. Um, we did talk through some of the zoning things, and as I mentioned earlier, those were already on our radar. And we already have David White looking into character-based zoning, and I'll be getting more into that too with him in the coming months. Um, I think the thing that was unclear to me was since they don't, the Wisdom House folks don't currently own any property. It was a question for me of like, well, where is Greg Tatro at with this project? Because he, he's sort of like the key missing piece in the conversations. And so they understood that we were uh, you know, the town would like to have him come and be included so that we can, you know, have conversation with the person who could actually um, be able to make something happen there. So that was sort of what we were.
Invite him to a planning commission meeting or something.
I think we could. I know that John has reached out to him several times, and um, I know he attended a meeting that I think Sarah's gonna speak to when I'm done, but he has not been available or present, is my understanding um, for the last couple of years. So that might be changing.
Yeah, I, I think we're seeing some of him re-engaging. So who else came to the Wisdom House presentation? Or watched it on video? Were you there?
I was there.
Yeah. So I thought it was a great presentation. Um, they're very well-informed. Michael Oman has a planning background, which um really helps, obviously, because he knows what he's reading and he can talk to form-based code and, and character-based zoning and all those things intelligently. He also has a very uh great presentation disposition, so he's very um factual in his presentation and points out where the shortcomings are, but doesn't lay blame on anything. It was an incredibly positive, productive presentation, in my opinion. Um, what they did present was, again, sort of a complex with multiple buildings and graduated housing types. Some of my concerns were that they were not posing it as an age-restricted um development or, or
Mm-hmm.
setting. And just so you know, there are multiple versions of age-restricted. So you could have fifty-five and over community. You could have a sixty-two and over community. Those are very common. Those are ways to incorporate a housing project so that you skirt the fair housing rules around age restrictions legally. And there are versions of that, and the most common version of both of those is that only eighty percent of the people have to qualify that are that are living there. So it allows for caregivers to also live within the same complex or own a unit. It also allows for um caregivers that might be relatives to be in the unit with you and not be age-restricted. It allows for a grandparent to care for a child. Some, you know, different, any kind of situation you can come up with, that's what the other twenty percent is for. Or if I'm uh, you know, eighty and I own a unit and I pass away and my person, my heir who receives the unit could live in the unit if they don't need the age restriction, right? So that's what that eighty percent threshold is for, is to accommodate all the other types of, of um people who may be in and out of residence. So I'm, I think for me, that's the biggest place where we should maybe I know I have an opinion, obviously, because I just know what it is, where we should talk about how, how we participate in that conversation to get the most bang for our buck, because I said it in the meeting, but my strong feeling is, I'm sorry, my strong feeling is that if it's not age-restricted, that the units will immediately get eaten up by the need in the marketplace by all um types of people who are fastest to get organized and make an offer and buy it.
And have the money.
And have the money readily available, have cash saved up or purchase-ready, as opposed to the intention, which they stated, which is what, what we've talked about multiple times before and heard in community feedback, which is to keep, to act as a vehicle to allow people in the community to move to other housing and stay within the community. And that's what the two of them wanna do, and that's why they are heading up this project, because they own single-family homes and want to stay in the community and move to the next type of housing, but it doesn't exist, so they wanna build it. And Sabina brought up a great question to me the other day, which she's gonna share.
Oh, no, I forgot what that question was.
Oh, I can rebound. Why don't you say your thing and then I'll say what we talked about.
Right now, because that's how my brain, it works in the now.
Here in the present.
Um, because I'm in that fifty-five minute older population, my brain is dead. Um, um, where can we see that recording? What, what meeting was it presented in initially? Wasn't it J C?
It was J C D.
J C D C. Yeah, I thought it was online, but I'll get the link and I'll send it to everybody.
Yeah, thank you. I would be really interested in seeing.
Great, but I would like to see it. And what would, what would keep them from making it um an age-restricted community?
I don't know. I'm not sure why they weren't planning it that way. I think they thought those were the only people who wanted to live together in that way. And I was like, people wanna live anywhere where they can find a place to live.
And I, I sensed a little bit of hesitancy about um, being exclusionary.
Yeah.
Felt like they feel like they need to be as open as possible in order to make this happen.
Right. I did sense that a little bit, and I think, yeah, on the exclusionary side, I think they were feeling like we like young people. We don't wanna leave anyone out. We, we don't mind sharing housing with multiple generations.
Right.
And, and again, they didn't wanna restrict it for that reason, but the
But you're saying that could work against, their generosity could work against them.
Correct, correct. I think they're underestimating the need for housing in the area, the desire to live in Jericho, and the level of organization that these hungry homebuyers have and would jump at the chance.
Can, can I ask a question? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it's one more. How much of the physical space of Riverside would that develop, that proposed development take up? Like twenty percent, thirty percent?
No, not thirty percent. On the, on the schematic that they showed, it was like, I think between fifteen and twenty percent.
So there would theoretically be room.
There's so much room for everything else. There was so much room.
Four to five acres that they, from my conversation.
Yeah.
And the whole big sixteen acre.
So I didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it was like four acres. I thought it was like twenty percent.
Maybe it was four acres.
But I might be wrong, so I'll get the presentation so you get it.
Sorry, okay, sorry, Wendy, go ahead.
Oh, no, it's fine. I just, I, I, it's okay.
No, I did it.
Um, it's that kinda day, right?
That's the day.
Um, what action do they need from us?
Um, I think the big, this is the, again, are you pitching me a softball here? I think they need infrastructure so that they can build anything at all. They need wastewater. And Tatro obviously needs to get involved in the conversation, and the conversation at the Wisdom House presentation is like, oh, really? Is the school board not
Oh, we're back to that.
Get the, get the wastewater capacity on the other side of the street, under the middle school soccer fields and this and that. And like, how can we all help push that forward, which I think then takes us back to the wastewater feasibility.
So my, I think it addressed the school board piece, because I bring it up to my wife all the time.
I was gonna say, give it inside.
And school board said to Tatro, we don't know. Do a study.
Right.
Tell us what we need.
Ask.
And then we'll decide. And that was many years ago.
My, my takeaway is from the meeting, which this segues nicely to are, um, they need, uh, they need infrastructure, they need revisions to the form-based code.
Yeah.
And they need somebody to facilitate coordination with Tatro.
Yep.
And which leads me to, again, to something I'm gonna keep harping on is, I think the town needs greater managerial capacity. And I think the town, i- in my mind, the more I think about this, we need a town manager who could take charge of a project like this.
Multiple projects.
Multiple projects, but for example, this is one, and say, okay, I'm gonna run this project. I have the time and the bandwidth and the experience, and I will do this. Without that person, very few of these things are gonna happen. So I think that, um, Tatro is, in my mind, um, I don't, I can't speak for him, but it feels like, um,
He's like.
Potential just waiting to be taken advantage of.
He's like, you people need to get your act together.
Right. And I'm imagining that, Linda, that it's beyond the scope of what you are able to do. I'm just, right? So I just wanna put, no, I just want, I really wanna make it clear that, that this, this conversation is, is recognizing that your plate is full.
Yes, and yes, and we've talked about, one in the town has a very specific job description. And they are maxed out doing those jobs.
Exactly, so, okay.
An extra person.
Yep.
Yes, we all agree about that.
That's why it's called a town manager.
And we have put that in our ARPA recommendation.
Arpa money to hire somebody tomorrow to start taking these projects on.
My complaint about ARPA money for permanent funds is that ARPA is meant to be temporary.
Permanent position, may, maybe it's a five-year position, you know, like maybe there, there's different kinds of.
Just the kind of thing that once you start, it doesn't stop.
I agree. I think, I think also advertising it as a, as a semi-permanent position or a five-year plan is. You're not gonna, the person who.
I don't know, you might get someone who was working remotely, who has expertise and can bring in some visionary ideas from, you know, other communities. I, I don't know, I wouldn't discount it, because we've, we've been doing a lot of, it's fully benefited, but it's, it's time limited, maybe with a subject to renewal. But it, it might be an option that some people are looking for.
Wendy, I guess I just have to go back to what the presentation from the guy, I don't remember his name, from St. Albans. He was boot on the ground in the coffee shop, on the corner, shopping at the hardware store.
That's true.
I really don't see any possibility of this being remote.
No.
The amount of time that I spend driving around, walking lots, looking at neighborhoods, creeping up people's driveways, I can't even imagine what this person.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, that's true. I'm thinking. Yep, alright, I retract that statement.
But I like the visionary part.
Yeah.
I like that part quite a bit, visionary and expertise, that appeals to me. Okay, the last thing that Sabina said about this topic, and then we should keep going so that we can be on time. Um, Sabina said, hey Sarah. Is it, what do you think the reality is that all these people who are ready to move out of their single-family homes? Into their next stage of housing? What do you think the possibility or the, or the uh, the. The percentages of those people who actually own a home that would be considered affordable housing? And I was like, very few. The very few of these homes that people are gonna migrate out of and into.
Converted to multi-unit.
Unless they were converted to multi-units are gonna sell under four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Don't we have a fair amount of housing stock? I mean, based on the, when we on Affordable Housing Committee looked at this. Roughly thirty to thirty-five percent of Jericho's housing on the grand list.
Yes.
Fits the category, and those are, I would venture a guess. That probably fifty to sixty percent of those are owned by people who are of an age where they could move to Wisdom Health. Whether they can afford to or not, I don't know. But you're, you're, you, you see the properties around you.
I'm inside my mind walking down Sunny New.
I'd say there's some clubs in that neighborhood that.
Yeah. But do you think it's greater than thirty-five percent?
Pinehurst, should look at that too.
Yeah, I would look at Pinehurst, I would look at Lafayette. Those houses turnover all the time. I'm not sure that the percentage of occupants.
Yeah.
Is greater than thirty-five percent.
Maybe not.
Yeah.
I also don't know everyone.
Yes, but it was a really great question, and I credit Sabina for thinking about it, is back to the comment that it's. Yes, and, 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 and we need to do all the things, all the types of housing. Even if we free up a eight hundred thousand dollar house so that someone can move to Wisdom House, that's still another house. That's gonna be hopefully occupied by more than one or two people, right? That's a single-family home um, that may turn to a younger demographic and be occupied. And then again, the next logical place for that person who's, who's hoping to not continue owning their single-family home, but to move into their next phase. So I thought it was a great question. Um, okay, next topic, local economy question of the month ideas.
Yes, so I have a document in that, still on call here.
Yeah, sorry. Sabina, you can't, can't check out yet. Uh, it's called local economy question.
And we'll see if what I put in there came up.
Yeah, I think, I think it did, if it, if it was shown on a Google Doc, then it will be on this doc, this is the same.
I closed out and asked her to log in, I was like, I don't have a login, so.
Oh, to the low?
No, it didn't, they are there.
Alright, so this is less organized than I wanted it to be, so I apologize. Um, and I do feel like we're getting a little bit ahead of David here. I was hoping to get a little bit of input from him, but I didn't before we had this conversation. That said, we don't have to decide anything today, we can decide at the next meeting. This was just sort of to start the conversation and the discussion. So, some of the questions that folks offered. Um, how many businesses operate in Jericho? What are their names? What do they do?
So since I wrote, I put that up there because this was trying to reach out to our community and say, how familiar are you with businesses in our town? I suspect that most people in Jericho would underestimate the number of businesses we have.
Absolutely.
And the scope of services that are available here. It would be nice to verify that and, and show to the rest of our community, we actually do have a business community here.
I could imagine turning that into a, did you know? Instead of an asking, a sharing of like, did you know we have, because we must have some data, right? That the data tells us this is what we have. So first, did you know? Yes, no, wow. Some kind of response to the did you know? So we're giving the facts, followed by a, what else would you really like to see here?
Yeah, but what else would I like to see, I think is a very important.
Right?
Yeah, I, I lean towards only asking questions because people have such limited time and attention. That we, that we can get data that we can act upon or help inform our decision-making.
It would be good to you, like what, what Heidi just said, use that as a springboard for.
Yeah, I think, I think that combines it.
Here are, here's the number of businesses that are exist in Jericho, and then, right, take it from there.
Yeah, I, I like that. What um, what Linda and I had talked about is at the bottom. So I had a really hard time with asking, uh, what types, what, what else do we need? Cause we've asked that several times. We asked that a lot in the Riverside Exploration, and I'm sort of exhausted by everybody saying we need a um. A drugstore and a, a gym and a.
More bars and restaurants.
More bars and restaurants.
Bagel shop.
Yeah, so what I would rather ask is, do you own a business or know someone who owns a business that isn't currently located in Jericho? But would like to be located here? What barriers are you, they facing? What support do you need to locate your business in Jericho?
Think that's a little too targeted.
Is it?
Well, if you ask me that question, I own a business. I would never locate a Jericho.
Right, but the intention is, like we were talking about Jay at the coffee shop, he gets people in all the time who are like, wow, I'd really like. Bring my business to Jericho, but there isn't X Y Z. Do you guys have room in the coffee shop? How can we partner? Like, and he, he does try to partner.
That's like a micro business.
Yeah, but he, he's a, he and Jesse.
Oh, I know, they do a great job.
Everyone. And they could probably name fifteen or twenty businesses that would like to live, like to be. Based in Jericho, but there isn't whatever in, again, infrastructure for them to have their business here. Right? They maybe want to rent a space. There's no, there's one sign in Jericho that says commercial build to suit. And it's next to the Union Bank in Jericho, in Riverside. Those signs are all over in different towns. Right, what can I build there? Yes, so I, I was compelled by that topic. If you could locate in Jericho, why haven't you? And if it's not you, then call your buddy who wants to locate their business here and ask why haven't they?
I think just if you're looking at too small of the universe.
Yeah, I agree. It's a small universe, but.
Yeah, I, I.
I feel like we've asked the other questions before, and I'm like, oh.
I'd like.
I know we wanted to, I'm in a, in a brewery.
But if we had something more sus- substantive from the town. Say there is a market in this town, and this is about our local economy, this is our economy section. So this is designed to help us promote the economy of Jericho through additional jobs, addition of employment. Of places to work, infrastructure, sports, so on and so forth. So what kinds of businesses do we want? Or do we want an office? Do we want?
I don't, I don't know what I want.
Would you want more dentists to be? Or would you like a, a medical park? Would you like a doctor park? What would, would you want to have? Food production manufacturer, a, a test kitchen in here?
I'm not an entrepreneur. I don't know what I want. And everything I don't. I live in Jericho, because I can reach everything I need within twelve minutes. Why I live here, because I don't want to live next to the Hannaford, but I like that it's twelve minutes from my house. I don't want to live next to the movie theater, but I like that it's twelve minutes from my house.
You don't want to live next to the coffee center, but as long as they're.
No, I do live next to a coffee shop. Um, no, but that's what, but I'm not an entrepreneur, I'm just trying to find a place to grow my business.
And this could be.
How do we find those people and have them answer?
Well, we find those people by saying, Jericho wants these services. There's a demand from our population. That if you can come in here and build, provide this, you know, we really need a local plumber. We'd really need a carpentry, a local.
Do you think people will come up with that plumber? I would love, I would love a local plumber, but I would not have come up with that answer, but now that you said it, I'm like.
Have a local plumber. We have a local plumber. He's crazy.
Do you need a brick and mortar to have a plumbing business?
Yeah.
You want someone who when you're, when you're.
Yeah, I mean, I know some plumbers in Jericho that I could call.
Yeah.
Right, but what I'm saying is, what's stopping somebody from setting up that business if you don't need a brick and mortar?
Right.
You know, you have to have a place to store.
But that's, that's not prevented by any zoning, and that's not a commercial build-to-suit space, like, like. We have, we have, I know of three plumbers who live in Jericho. If you need a plumber, call me.
I will do that. It might be, you know, two in the morning on a Saturday.
Fine, you'd be shocked, I get a lot of calls. Oh my god, Sarah, my furnace just broke. Who will come to my house?
I hear, I hear you though, Eric, on the, the demand, because, you know, sort of the stimulating demand. There is a piece though. I know Susan's really hot to trot about getting medical, some kind of medical people here, and I think that is just fantasy. And I don't think, and I think that is fantasy from, if you look at. Um. Our population density and how healthcare is organized and funded.
But rich and family practice is thriving. I think you could.
Cambridge Family Practice is there. I don't think I, I'm gonna.
You need the, you need the providers who are willing to go out on their own, but. But. I think that's a town issue, I think that's a medical provider.
That's what I'm saying. It's a medical provider issue, not a, not a.
Built a facility for them, like the Cambridge Health Clinic that was, that wasn't paid for by the doctors that are there. They, they built that first. It used to be a.
In the seventies, they did.
Uh, no, it's.
You have to kind of go back and think about what, what is the purpose?
Yes, thank you, thank you Wendy.
Yeah, because, because this is not a replacement for a market, a needs assessment study that a business is going to. Conduct in order to figure out whether or not they want to set up a business in Jericho. So what, what is that, what is our purpose? What, what do, what information do we need as the planning commission as we're looking at our town pan- plan?
Well, in the town plan, we're using this as an inventory. What's here? And then that becomes as part of the plan. What do we want to see here going forward?
Yeah, but I don't think we needed, I don't think we need to ask the town people about what's here. I mean, we. That's not, that's not a way to gather that information, I don't think. I think that like, this is about engagement in the planning process.
I think David's gonna, when we have our next work session, be presenting some of that data of like, what's here?
That's great.
Two things that we can tell the commission to.
We don't know. The town does not know how many businesses are in town. How many one-man bands, one-woman bands are located in somebody's house that does business, there's.
So how does that help us, Eric, in terms of future growth? How does new, listen, I'm just, I'm, I'm really trying, because I, I don't disagree with you. If, if the goal is, how do we foster and stimulate additional growth? How does knowing that answer, how does knowing who's here get us to how do we foster and stimulate, if that's our goal?
If our goal is to say foster and simulate.
Yeah.
Work from home, people who's entrepreneurs or people who are employed but work from home.
Yeah.
Then it's good to know where they are, so one, we can reach out to them, help create a community around that.
Yeah.
Which becomes a community of support, which allows Jericho to become an, a hub. You know, the reason some of these places work is because you have economies of scale. Oh, you're an accountant. Oh, you're an architect. Oh, you guys work together because you need each other. Oh, you're, you're an attorney.
Got it, got it.
So if we can create, if we tell the town and we find out, these are all here. Then we can try to foster that and create that kind of growth. But if we don't know what's here, you know, we're gonna end up saying, let's build an office park in the commercial center.
It's also about, um, when you know what you have, it's like, okay, well, we know we have this. Do we want to retain it? And if so, what do we need to do to retain it? So it's also about retention of existing.
And growth.
Yes, so some of the questions that um, are asked in the municipal planning manual that I've been reading. Like what do, so what do we want to retain? What do we want to evolve? And what do we want to transform? And so if you think about that in the context of the local economy. Um, I don't know if that would help frame this conversation a little bit.
Yeah, I think so.
Knowing, you know, we, we need to know what we have to be able to know what we want to retain. Or we do obviously know what some of them are, because they're very visible in the community. What do we want to evolve, meaning growth typically? And then what do we want to transform, which is like, we are, we know we have this and it exists, but we want it to be very different. Or we want it to be completely changed, not, rather than just evolving, it's more of a, a dramatic shift.
But isn't that inventory a different kind of ask to the public? If we want to inventory existing businesses, isn't that? And I, I think that's important, but I just think it's different than what we've been doing in this series of questions.
Yeah, and I think David, when we get to the work session, like I said, will provide that background information for us. Of what is here to best he can with the data that is accessible.
My point is, the data wouldn't capture me. My business is in Williston, sorry, I'm a new speaker, you're speaking close to. I work from home two days, three days a week. I'm not captured in David's piece. And several of my buddies have an office that's in South Burlington or somewhere else. They're working from home, two, three days a week. Where they're working a hundred percent remote, but their company is in Texas or somewhere like that.
Right.
By missing that skew or that slice of the population. I believe we are missing a phenomenal opportunity to. Market Jericho as a place where you can work from home here. There's an infrastructure to support that. There is a community of other people who work, sole proprietors, working from home, programmers. I've got programmers in my neighborhood who are home all day. They're not gonna show up in anything that David's gonna give for us.
Interesting.
This is a way for us to find out how many people in Jericho really work in Jericho. But are not on the tax payrolls of Jericho.
So, yeah, I, I think the other piece though, that is, is compelling too, is. Are those people interested in connecting, if that's the point, right? And does that connecting lead to increased? Either people choosing to live here because they want to live here, or choosing to create some joint spaces together. Or joint economies together. And so I think going back to the, making sure that it's a lead-in to the question. That, that Sarah is asking, which is really like, what would get in your way from wanting to have your business here? Or what could we do to encourage you to have a larger business presence in, in Jericho?
From home and that's your jam and.
Right.
Something else.
Or what can we do to support you when you work from home?
Right.
For example, we've got Ale and Bean.
Yeah.
It's a great place if you're working from home and you just, I need a break. When my son-in-law was here, he needed to do some writing.
Right, exactly. So I think that, I think the real question is, what does, yes, having the data might be useful. But really, the, the additional pieces go to the questions that you're asking more of is like, what could we do to stimulate? Even if we did say, we don't know how many people work from home, but we know that there are a lot of folks who are in Jericho. Working from home. What would enable that, you know, what kind of supports would they want to grow their business or grow in this community? Right? And what could the community do to support more growth for them and or their peers? I think it's something like that.
I think that is a really great line of questioning that starts off like this. Are you employed? If yes, and then you go down one path.
Yeah.
That says. That says more what Eric was describing. If yes, do you work at home, full-time, part-time, not at all? And, and again, you go down a path, like, if you work from home full-time, specific questions, if you work from home, part of the, not part-time, but part of the times, like I work at home, again, probably an average of one or two days a week, but I don't go into my office. Do I need or want any other space? No, I'm perfectly content with that. Do I want other business and businesses in Jericho? Yes. Do I need Jericho to do anything else so that I continue working part of the time at home? No, would I be really interested to see how many people work full-time remotely from home? Or part of the time remotely from home? Yeah, I really would. Because that also goes right back into our housing conversation, is I know we talk about these households with only two people that have maybe three or four bedrooms. A lot of those bedrooms are our offices. That's what people are shopping for. They want a separate space to work in because they are working full-time from home, or they want what on paper looks like four bedrooms because they both work from home. Um, and that's, I think, a really
Yeah.
Didn't mention is, yes, I don't need.
Eh, yeah.
But, but I sure would be nice if I could meet clients here. I don't wanna meet clients in my house.
So maybe like a gray working space.
I meet clients there all the time, right?
And or all those single-family houses that we're gonna convert into not just single-family houses, maybe some of them become like co-working spaces, or people divide up half their house and make it into a place. I mean, there's a lot of creative ways to think about the changing work style.
But that also, again, this is the economic piece of it. So understanding what the economic base of Jericho is, beyond the physical infrastructure, to me is very important for us to help decide what do we at Jericho in the planning envision the future of Jericho's economy?
Right.
Yeah, are we gonna be a remote work center? I don't know.
Okay, well, we're getting, we're at the end, we're past the end of our allotted time on this. Does anyone have any other parting thoughts, if we're on the right track, or if they think we should go in a totally different direction?
Can we, if, if we're keeping, I don't know, I don't know what we're keeping in this thing, but um, homemaker slash caregiver.
Yeah.
And it is employment. It's not, not, it's not, there's no money in it, but it is a job.
One hundred percent.
Yeah, that's my bad. I, I, yeah, sorry about that.
No problem.
Just so we can blame Wendy for that.
Yes, you can. You can, yes.
You're messing up.
You know how biased you are.
Well, I knew, like, I was like, yeah, it needs to be somewhere, but yeah, I, I got in my head about employed equals.
It's just, it's not out in the public yet. It's in, it's in edict, so here we are.
Yeah, yeah. I, I was like, are you employed by someone versus being self-employed? But you are self-employed if you're a homemaker or caregiver, in a way. And that's how we're defining employment, working self-employed or other.
By your housemates. Yeah.
All right, well, between now and when we revisit this at our next meeting to decide on a question, I will try to assimilate all the comments that we had tonight. To refine the questions, I will reach out to David and talk through with him to see if he has any recommended questions to ask. Um, and I will meet with Susan to talk through um her ideas. Does that sound good?
We're gonna do a bunch of work and take the nonsense we just spewed into and make it productive.
I think it was really productive, though. Can I just, I know we're trying to close up, but I appreciate the poking at it because it did really stimulate this question, going back to like, well, what does it look like for our future?
Right.
And are we considering all the different ways that work looks like and that economic development can look like? So like, really thinking about new models instead of just existing models. So thank you for engaging in that conversation. I thought that was helpful.
Are, are we, uh, that's the other thing I was gonna say, are we, are we asking, or, and, and I would love to know what David thinks about this. Are we exploring other areas of the, of the economy that maybe aren't here, you know?
Right.
Like, aside from working at home and all that stuff, are there, like, the ag sector?
Right, there's that whole new hub.
I, I had, I had put some comments in the side there about like other.
I know, I just didn't want to know. I didn't know if you wanted those to be public, so I, I.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's why, that's why they're not visible.
But I do think that they should be in there because I don't think people necessarily think of them as economic uh development.
Yep, I agree. Okay, uh, really quickly before we move on, S J, do you have any comments about this topic?
Oh, wow, thanks. Um, no, the only, the only thing that, that popped into my mind as we were talking was um, thinking about where I spend my money and how much of my money I spend in Jericho versus outside of Jericho. Um, but that's, that seems like a, a different world from the one that you all are, are thinking about, so I don't know how helpful that is.
No, I think that's a really great base question or, or a way to look at it and to dissect it. Um, and in the public, Dave, do you have any, anything to add about our question of the month before we move on?
Yeah, I had two comments. One had to do with Greg Tetro, but you covered that. Greg Tetro got to the end of that presentation. And he only made one comment. He said he needed, uh, sewer.
Yeah.
He won't, he's not gonna be able to develop that full thing the way he has it without getting. The other, just thing I, to round out, somebody made a, ask a question, what are they doing in, in Morrisville? Um, that's being handled by a five oh one C three, Lemoyal Housing Partnership. They, they have only three people. They're doing two hundred and eighty apartments.
Oh, just wave your arms.
I can, I still hear you.
Just the lights went out.
In the dark.
There we go.
There we go.
Yeah, that Lemoyal Housing Partnership has two hundred and eighty apartments in Lemoyal County and in the town of Hardwick. And they're doing it with three people. Uh, you know, the way they can do it with three people is that it's all of the uh, application process, the maintenance. Everything is being handled by Alliance Property Management, which is out in back of the uh, uh, across the street from our post office. It's out in back of Palmer's.
I'm like, I did something.
So five oh one C three.
That is super helpful information. Um, Stuart Alexander, last call for any comments on the discussion topics. Going once, going twice. Okay, moving on. Next topic, six, uh, report past events, liaison updates, and take away from any recent event or seminars. Does anyone have any liaison updates?
When you were all anti-affordable housing, so I have nothing to add, but you did.
I think, I don't think we have anything earth-shattering in the motivation commission. We are heading up Green Up Day this week.
Oh, great. Green Up Day is my favorite.
Stay tuned.
It always rains.
No, not always. I just get mad cuz some of my neighbors pick up all the trash in the days before Green Up Day. And then when I get my kids out there to pick up the trash, there's no trash. But we always find some. Usually, the first part is gong kalo. I can do pretty well.
Come on, Patrick.
Yep, I believe it. Um, okay, so closing out that topic, report number seven, report upcoming events. What is upcoming? What's our next working session? Is it our next meeting?
Our next working session is not till April eighteenth.
Okay.
Which is two meet, well, we have one meeting in between.
Yes.
Um, and that's when we will be doing the local economy.
Got it.
Um, and then after that, we have May third, which is our community forum.
Right.
At MMU.
Right.
Can I ask a question on that one?
Yes.
Um, that's a lot. That's a big thing to pull off. Is that something that David and his partner are organizing? And to what extent are we needed to help in the thinking and planning and organizing?
Great question. That is a great question. So yes, they will be the primary organizers of that. However, I do have as an agenda item on the eighteenth of April to plan for them. So by then, we will know what tasks might need to be done by the planning commission. So far, what I've heard is that there may be a need for planning commission folks to um run a station or staff a station, but I have not understood what the stations are going to do yet. Um, so I don't, and I don't know how many folks we might need.
Okay.
But I will get that information.
Uh, I definitely will be here for April, or for May, the May session. I will not be here April eighteenth. And I don't think Susan will be either.
I will be either.
Susan will not be. Okay, and you both will not be.
Right.
April eighteenth.
You will not be?
It's school vacation.
The week before, it's the week before.
Remotely.
And there's a chance that I'm on vacation also that week.
Oh, so we should either move that April eighteenth meeting to a week earlier if we're all not gonna be here.
Or the next, we have.
The next week is school vacation and I won't be here that Tuesday either.
But we have, don't we have an April meeting in two weeks?
Yeah.
April fourth.
Right.
So. Could we flip-flop them? Is David not available that day?
Or he won't be ready?
Um. Maybe that was the issue. Well, that date has been on our poster that's been hung around town. Um, that's true. So let me think about that.
I didn't know I was gonna be one of several people not available, so I bought my plane tickets cuz they're really cheap on Tuesday afternoons.
Okay.
Well, it's also taxed.
God, I hope I'm not waiting till the last day to do my taxes.
Sometimes my accountant makes me do that periodically.
I'm my accountant. I should be able to control that.
So you think.
Okay. Yeah, I am just learning now that all of you are not going to be here on that date, so. Well, so I might be able to be present, you know, just not in the building.
Yes, and I, I might be in the same.
Wendy, are you available April eighteenth?
Yes.
Okay. That Wendy.
Pretty sure I am.
Chris.
So someone has to run the meeting. Susan and I both will not be here.
Okay.
Well, we need enough people to have the meeting.
Right, right.
So Sabina can call in and you three, then that would be enough.
But it sounded like there were some ifs.
I, I am a very tentative person on the eighteenth.
Plus, it would be great to have all our best thinking about how to plan for that May event, cuz it's an important event.
Yep. Okay, um, well.
Push it out to, I'm out until the twenty-first that week.
Same.
I don't think anybody wants to do something on a Friday.
No, I'm out, I'm out all that weekend, most of the time.
You guys are getting back on vac- from vacation. We can meet on a Friday.
I'm gonna have to check. David's the real, uh.
Why don't you find out?
He's got kids at school. He'll be out the week after.
Dave?
He has kids.
His kids are adults.
Yes.
All right, so I'll check with David if that day is rescheduleable. And then we'll have to figure out where all the posters are and go around with a marker. Okay.
Okay. Um.
But May fourth, we're having the big.
May third.
Yes, that cannot change.
Well, that's right. I already missed Pi Day. Very disappointed in that.
We could have had Pi at the meeting.
We really, that was the oversight.
Yeah.
Okay, any other upcoming events that we should discuss? No, having none, moving on to topic eight, other business. Any other business? No, hearing none, moving on to topic nine, wrap up and planning for next meetings. We just did some of that.
And did that, um, April fourth, we have our planning commission organizing meeting where we'll elect a chair and a clerk. Um, review the rules of procedure. Um, we are going to be discussing the housing target resolution. We're gonna be finalizing the April question of the month that we discussed tonight. And I had on there Village Wastewater update, but I feel like I gave that tonight, so if there's new information, I will pre- present that.
We'll have the website by then.
Maybe we'll have the website and that can be the update.
Okay, and may, and or maybe David will have enough clarity about the May meeting that we could do a little working session on that. Planning on April fourth for the May third.
Yeah.
In there, right?
I will, I, I will.
Feel optimistic that our.
And or.
Part that you described about electing people, doing that will be quick.
Yeah, and he might not, it, it may be that there's not that much that we need to do. I mean, that is the contract with them to do the public outreach, so it might be that there, it's a a lesser lift for us as a planning commission.
Yes. Yep. Um, and then for the eighteenth, we just went over that, yeah. Um, the local economy was the primary topic, um, in planning the forum. Um, and then approving the housing target resolution, if we're in a comfortable place to do that.
Okay.
Do you have any other agenda items that you want me to put on next month? Okay, well, if anything comes to mind, send me an email, let me know.
I appreciate how good you are about planning far out.
Yes, and I like how you give us homework.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, that's good feedback, cuz I've always been, I've been thinking like, do they like this? Am I, is this too much?
Well, I don't know if anybody likes homework, but I do like clear expectations and a clear ask for me to know how I'm contributing and.
Yes.
That's makes it a lot easier.
And a sense of moving forward that way too.
Okay.
Right? Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, closing out topic nine, moving to sec- to topic ten, executive session. Do we have any need for an executive session?
Yeah.
No, moving on to eleven, adjourn.
Move, adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning? Perfect. Okay, thanks, everyone, for adjourning.
Thank you. Good to see y'all.
Have a good night, everyone.
Yeah, thank you for an excellent meeting, Sarah.
Just.
Good night.
Good night, all.